Second on that. Second on the change of the agenda, at this time will now approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Onto item D, presentations and announcements. At this time, we would like to invite Principal Mike, Mike Huss, of the Animal Mentory School, Cops for Kids Program. Please come forward. And we have the presentations by Chief John Alfred, Police Officer of the Year and Volunteer Officer of the Year.
So I'm gonna have. That's, nope.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I'm just gonna talk loud. I'm gonna have Sergeant Scroy come on up and present this one. Can everybody hear me? So Mr. Huss has been, I've been working with Mr. Huss for about ten years now, as long as I've been in the department. We started the Cops for Kids Program in two thousand nineteen. One year we had COVID, so we had to skip that one year. Mr. Huss has been an intricate part of the Cops for Kids Program. He's been with me the past forty years and hardly ever misses any days. I'll be there, always with a smile. One thing I can say is not only due to ten years that I've worked with Mr. Huss, as he had the passion for the kids, that he helped out and was a teacher and now the principal and for the Cops for Kids Program, but the passion that he has for the kids.
What he does for those kids and the time that he puts in, not only does he take his own time and walk the kids to school, does bicycle day with the kids, he's just an intricate part of the Cops for Kids Program and the school in general. So Chief Alfred and I decided to do something. Chief Alfred and I decided to do something special to show our appreciation for the service and dedication that he has done for the Cops for Kids Program. So it's, it's an honor to, to present this to Mr. Huss. I plan on working many more years with you, sir. And Chief Alfred can read what is on the plaque.
So we hereby honor Mike Huss in recognition for your passion and commitment to the Cops for Kids Program twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
I honestly don't feel like I do anything special. I just follow this man's lead when it comes to Cops for Kids. He is, he is a blessing to our community and our school and Chief Alfred is a great supporter of our school. I cannot tell you how involved they have been. I'm seeing it more now that I'm principal, how much these gentlemen and their staff care about our schools. We are truly blessed and I thank you guys for that. And I hope all of us in here value who they are because that, that is the true story of the Cops for Kids. They want to come in and make a positive difference. So thank you to you guys. So I, I appreciate all that you do. So thank you. Thank you tonight. Thank you, everybody.
We do appreciate you, Principal Huss. Thank you for all you do for kids. Much appreciated. Thank you. Presentation number two by John Alfred, Police Chief, Police Officer of the Year and Volunteer Officer of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're gonna start with the Volunteer of the Year. So this year we kinda did something different. Normally we just do the one, one award and this year I wanted to honor both an officer and a volunteer from our department. Our department would not run without our volunteer program. Seriously, the lady sitting up here, we couldn't function. We have no records individuals. So those volunteers come in and do a lot of records work for us as well. So having said that, the, I kinda took myself out of the mix this year when it came to the decision on who got the officer and the Volunteer of the Year. What I did was I tasked Sergeant Scroy, Corporal Legarreta and Corporal Rego with coming up with who was going to receive the awards this year. And then when they came up with a decision, they came to me and I said, okay, why? And they justified both of them. So the first one, I'd like to have Blaine come up for him, please. So Blaine has been with the department since two thousand ten and I'll tell you, this, this volunteer has put in thousands of hours of volunteer time. One thing that he has been instrumental in is our special events program. So when, anytime we have a special event, whether it's the Halloween Haunt, whether it's you know, any kind of event we have, Blaine always gets the personnel to come out and work it. He's, he's really been a, a big part of the volunteer program, getting those individuals coming out and doing these events. So Blaine, I wanna present you with the Jon Stewart Memorial Award and Volunteer of the Year.
Just wanna thank the council, the chief, the officers and volunteers. I've been with the program twelve years or more. It's been a long time, I have to admit. And I've gone through a variety of different chiefs and all of them have been really supportive of the program. It's, it is really an important part of the community. It gets people out there. It lets us see officers. It gets, it helps us relieve the officers from doing those things like traffic duty. I know people don't necessarily like it when we tell them to stop in the intersections, but they still do. But we certainly do appreciate the support from the community and the officers and all the other volunteers. So thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Alright, so the Officer of the Year. Al, come on up. So. This one, the command staff came to me and presented me with Al's name. At first I was like, what? It's, it's been a rocky beginning of the year, but I'll tell you, Al has stepped up. Come on up here for a second. This officer has stepped up. He has made a total turnaround, positive attitude, going out, raising his stats, you know, going out, doing his job, making it safe for the community. But he's also taken on some extra admin duties. For instance, he recently went to the Institute of Criminal Investigation DV School. And after the school, he came back, said, chief, we need to update our forms. These forms are a little old. So Al's been redoing a bunch of our forms, including our medical release form. He's also our range master for the department. And actually has stepped up because now we require our officers to shoot a minimum of every quarter. And Al has really stepped up with the program and done a wonderful job. So Al, I want to present you the Jon Stewart Memorial Award, Heart of the Lion. Congratulations.
Oh, well, not much to say. This is, is going to me as the individual officer, however, I wouldn't be able to, you know, complete all these tasks or do the things that I've done without these guys. The other, the other group isn't here, but they're a part of it. The chief helps out, Sergeant Scroy helps out. This is more of a, a team award for myself, not just an individual's. So thank you, council. Thank you to the citizens. Alright.
Congratulations again to Officer Checkley and Officer Casillas. We're proud to have you guys here. It's been good to watch you grow. Onto item E, public comment. Note, this is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons may address the city council at this time on any subject within the jurisdiction of the I, of the Ione City Council. Please be mindful of the four-minute time limit per person. Pursuant to Brown Act, the city council may not take action or engage in a detailed discussion on an item that does not appear on the agenda. However, that council, matters that require council action will be referred to staff report and a recommendation for possible action at a future council meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council at this time? Come on up. Platform's yours.
I was pointing near you. There you go. We'll call it. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Rick Sheer, citizen of Ione. Just wanted to open up a little public comment on the discourse that was approved out. Howard Park, speaking with citizens here in Ione, I understand that there's quite a bit of people that wanna have a bike track out there as well, which I'm definitely in favor of. I didn't think the skate park was gonna be as popular as it is. Turns out that surprisingly and happily is very busy out there. Current issues with the discourse that's there now, half of it's on school property. Excuse me. Half it's on school property, questionable behavior while people are playing disco on school property. I believe those are alcohol and tobacco-free, drug-free areas. We wanna ensure that. I think I have an amicable solution that can basically is a win-win where we can open up that area to have that, keep that activity away from the schools. Because like we know here, just from today, how much we actually do care about the schools. Excuse me, and the kids in schools. But I would just like the new council to keep that in consideration moving forward. I'm definitely willing to meet with the parks committee and the equestrian people to figure out a solution, which again, I think makes more sense for the city, makes more sense for the citizens, makes more sense for the long-term viability of disc golf in Ione. And really just an all-around better solution. Also opens up a part of the park that has never been opened before, could also assist the city in maintaining that area, cut down fire reduction as well. Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that to the public comment, saying that we can, I believe the citizens here in Ione do want to have both. I think we should have both, but I think we should plan a little bit more accordingly and offer a little bit more room because that park is there, there's areas that need to be developed. And this way it kinda takes a bit of the usable land away from future development, whereas the area that I'm looking at is a little bit further from development, would take a lot more to get going, which again would consist of the longevity of this golf there, which is something that I want, but I'm also not going to not recognize the behavior that comes along with some of that activity as well. I'd like to keep it away from the schools, keep it away from my nieces and nephews and some of my other nieces and nephews' children and your children and so forth and so on. But again, that's, just wanted to bring that to the city's attention. Also will mention that I do have two presentations set up for local charity outlets. Fairly confident that I've secured at least ninety percent of the funding to purchase the equipment for the course, donate it directly to the city of Ione. That way there's no if, ands or buts about it. It's the city's property. They can do what they want with it as long as the citizens are okay with it. That's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Lou Lockhart from Howard Park Disc Golf Course. I wanted to come up and say thank you to all the council members that approved the agreement. I was not present at the meeting when it was approved. I was unaware that was on the agenda. I actually told it be on the twentieth today, so I just wanted to make sure that I came in and I'm speaking for a lot of players that weren't able to make it tonight, that we really appreciate the approval of the agreement. You have allowed us to maintain a section of the park that had never been maintained for a long time. And you know that, that we will continue to maintain that. There was a hefty cleanup done funded by, I think, the Ione Band of Mewoc Indians and Fire Department years ago. Councilman Rhodes was part of, and it was to clean up the nature trail and give access to the community and primarily students and children to get from wildflower to the schools. And the disc golf course in that area, I can guarantee you will keep that trail maintained, safe, open, beautiful. Not just for the students to get back and forth, but for the whole community to enjoy. As far as that activity and our actions that Rick's talking about, I don't see what he's describing. I don't think that we've ever had a negative interaction with the school in the nine, eight years that it's been there. I've never had a complaint. I mean, I, I know Mike Huss personally. He's never come to me with any sort of complaint or anything like that, so I don't really know what Rick is referring to. My main, main purpose was to come up here and say thank you, though, that we all appreciate it very much. You provided an activity for the community. It is not uncommon to see forty people at a time on that course right now on the weekends. Saturdays, I went out there Saturday and I saw at least thirty, thirty-five people playing it, so that speaks for itself that it is being used and they love it. So it, it's hard to find a place for disc golf course like where it's at that has the qualities that the land does where it's at, that creates such a desirable impact and a, a desirable location to go play. I've built four courses in my life and I've played a lot of courses. Some are very boring. This one is incredible. I, I have comments from people that I appreciate all the time and work that you put in for us. The course is awesome. One of the best I've ever played and I've played more than most. We're lucky to have it. Comments like, it's a wonderful endeavor. I'm so proud of the people. You know who you are. They work so hard on this course. Bravo disc golf. Another member says, my family loves the course. Thank you for all of your effort. Another member says, thank you for all the work, et cetera, and everything you put into this. Sounds like a job well done. Thank you for the efforts and information. Thank you for the diligence and another activity in here in Ione. Endeavors are not easy. Disc golf is an up and coming activity. The more we have here, the brighter entertainment, the better for the economy and small businesses. Another person says, I don't play disc golf, but as a new member of the Ione community, I certainly appreciate the time and energy and efforts to make the course a beautiful park, a power park. It goes on and on, and those are actually Ione Community Facebook pages. Those are not our disc golf pages. Those are people from the Ione community commenting on what's been put out there. They walk the area frequently. They are, it's amazing the transformation that area's been through. So I appreciate you to give us the opportunity to continue that out there. I would like to touch one part here that Rick has also made comments online that has says, the original BMX track has been gone for forty years. It's also a dirt track and can be rebuilt in a day or two. None of the course is on cemetery property. You would not be privy to outside agreements with the ACU, UFD portion of the school. What does this have to do with city water issues? What tax dollars? It's all volunteer Doja Nation work. The organization that's behind this consists of three lifelong residents. I'm glad to see. It's kind of contradicting what he's actually said online and Rick is, I don't know if he's still here, but he's been an active player on the course and part of our club. So I don't know why he's coming in here trying to suggest moving the course to a new, new area. And if that is brought up, I will say that the area that the course is on now is over thirteen acres, which is why it's been, been able to be built to eighteen holes. And the other area he's talking about is only seven and a half acres and it will not support an eighteen hole course, it will only support nine. So in the future, in future discussions, I would like councils to, to consider that. I know there have been talks of the area he is talking about, south of the horse arena becoming the mountain bike track or a bike track over there. No small plans, dry dirt, buildable area. I would also support that over there. I think the kids need something to do on the bikes and park. Don't wanna take any more time. Thank you guys again for approving our agreement.
Thank you.
Hi, Tommy Quinn, right downtown here. We're doing this change here before we, I wanna say a couple things. First, I wanna thank the Fire Department for going through the neighborhoods with all the engines and all the lights and commotion. They do that every year and that is really a wonderful thing. We have a great, great, great Fire Department. Second, I wanna thank the Police Department. We are rated as the number seven safest city in the state of California, which is considerably better than the city of Tiburon, the city of billionaires. We have a great Police Department. Well, I know you live there, but.
Millionaires, not billionaires.
Well, I used to live there, so I know what I'm talking about. Yeah, and another thing I wanna say, this is kinda off topic a little bit, there's a lot of kinda grumpy, grumpy about the post office. And I talked to people there and they work from six in the morning till midnight, get up and do it again because of Christmas and Amazon and all those other things. So please be kind to the male people. They're doing their best. I guess that's pretty much it. I wish everybody Merry Christmas. Thank you all.
Merry Christmas to you. You're takers. Anything online? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll close public comments. And on to our consent calendar. We have four items this evening. Minutes, warrants, administrative reports and Public Works Department. And again, I do like to just note to thank our departments for filling out, for sending us reports. It's like a long overdue. It's nice to have that on a quarterly basis. It really helps the council see what's going on behind the scenes. If there's any discussion or anyone wants to prove an item.
I, I would, the November fifteenth minutes need one small correction. It had you coming in on a Zoom, whereas you actually came in on a phone call. So I, that, I think needs to be corrected. And I would like to continue the December sixth minutes. There was some missing information.
Okay, so we'll pull item one and we'll discuss that separately and then we'll go on to, if there's no changes to items two, three and four. A lot of our ten motion to approve those together.
I'll make the motion when we prove those together.
Second. Move a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries to approve items two, three and four, five, zero, zero. Public hearing, there is none. Item one now becomes item, well, it's item four, I guess, actually, ahead of the next business piece, I believe. Is that what it goes? Okay, do it now. So item number one is open for discussion. Technical questions at this point. Any technical questions? Okay. Public comment on item number one. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close public comments and now we'll have our discussion on item number one, alternative motion, an emotion to prove.
I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, let's have discussion.
Just the simple correction on the November fifteenth and then the December sixth minutes to be continued, so that they can be redrafted and corrected.
And what's the correction on the fifteenth? Oh, that's the.
The Zoom versus the phone.
Okay. Is there, Madam Clerk, do you have that covered? Very good. Either discussion? Right, with that, there's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from number of fifteenth with one correction and to continue December sixth minutes till the next meeting. Let's move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five, zero, zero. Public hearing, there isn't this evening. And on to item H, adoption of resolution two, zero, two, two, dash, two, nine, canvassing the ballots and confirming the number, November eighth, two thousand twenty-two election results. Technical questions? Seeing none, hearing none. With that, I'll open public comments on the election results certification. Public comment? Nothing online? Close, close public comments? And with that, I'll take a motion to approve the resolution number two, zero, two, two, dash, two, nine.
Make a motion.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? With that, I'll take a motion to approve resolution two, zero, two, two, dash, two, nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries five, zero, zero. And then on to item number six, declaration of the election oath of office to Councilman Dominic Gatlin, Allison Lefane, Jack Mitchell and Stacy Rhodes by Janice Trubusso, City Clerk.
It's all yours. But everybody raise their right hand, please. And you can repeat after me. So I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations, everybody.
Up to you. To your agenda.
Sitting over your chair.
Oh, good.
Rodney left the agenda for you.
Yeah, so there's a ten-minute recess.
Being twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two. And whereas during, during Dan's term, he served as the city representative on the following Amador County Transportation Commission, Amador County Transportation Oversight Committee, Amador County Recreation Agency for twelve years, Amador County Economic Development Committee, Mule Creek Advisory Committee, Amador Regional Sanitation Authority and Amador Air District. And whereas Dan also served on the various city committees, the City Finance Committee, the Wastewater Committee, Ione Economic Development Committee and the Golf Course Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ione does hereby recognize, thank and congratulate Dan Efferson for his longtime service and dedication to the city of Ione. Be it further resolved that the city of Ione wishes, does hereby extend its sincere best wishes to Dan Efferson in all his future endeavors. The foregoing resolution, resolution was duly introduced and adopted by the city council of the city of Ione at their regular meeting held on December twenty, twenty twenty-two by the following vote. Dominic Gatlin, Jack Mitchell, Diane Ratten, Allison Lefay and Stacy Rhodes. Congratulations.
I think you got everything.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Number eight on the agenda, adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-two, dash, thirty-one. Thank you, Ronnie Pomondin for his service to the city of Ione. There you go.
Oh, there he is. I gotta know where he is.
Hiding.
Stand up here. That's great. This is resolution number twenty twenty-two, dash, thirty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Ione, thanking Rodney Pomondin for two years of public service to the city of Ione. Whereas the city council of the city of Ione hereby acknowledges Rodney Pomondin for his dedicated service to the city of Ione while serving. while serving as council member for the elected period from January 2020 through December 2022. And whereas Rodney has demonstrated his dedication and commitment to the betterment of the community by serving as vice mayor for the year 2022. And whereas Rodney also served on the Park and Rec Commission from June 2019 through January 2020. And whereas during Rodney's term, he served as the city's representative on the following: City Finance Committee and Wastewater Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ione does hereby recognize, thank, and congratulate Rodney Pomondin for his service and dedication to the city of Ione. Be it further resolved that the city of Ione does hereby extend its sincere best wishes to Rodney Pomondin in all his future endeavors. The foregoing resolution was duly, duly introduced and adopted by the city council of the city of Ione at their regular meeting held on December 20, 2022 by the following vote: Dominic Gatlin, Jack Mitchell, Diane Ratten, Allison Lefane, and Stacy Rhodes. Congratulations. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Moving on to agenda number nine, advertisement to receive bids for the construction of the Train Depot Park Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As some of you are aware of the long history of this project, started several years ago. The city received a grant from the State Department of Parks and Recreation for $157,000. The project was stopped due to some threatened litigation and due to the fact that the grant rules and regulations were not being followed. So in order to restart this project, it was suggested by the state to go back out to bid to finish the pieces of construction that must fall under a public contract code requirement as a public works project. And so in your packets today are the items that are not yet completed on the park, which is the irrigation landscaping, the completion of the restrooms, which have been partially built. But they need to be turned inward 180 degrees facing in the park and then finishing the ground cover for the playground equipment. Those are the basic items, and then the parking lot. So there's actually quite a few parking stalls that are planned. I think eight or nine stalls are planned. And those are the pieces that are not yet complete. This particular RFP would be released with your vote tonight. We'll come back to you with the responsible low bidder for an award, probably in the first meeting of February, if, if the timing is, I, I think I figured out that, that timing. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Is our original grant still okay? Because the original one was written to have no labor. And this one, we're going back and getting another grant, or is it falling under the same?
It's the same grant, and I've talked to the state.
They're okay with-
They're being very patient with us since we're way. One of the requirements of this grant was that it go back out to bid before December 31st of this year, so very happy we're here tonight. Because without that, we would not be on, we'd be missing their timelines for completing the project.
Okay.
Where is it advertised at?
Well, it'll be advertised in all the usual places, the Builders Exchange, the local newspaper, other newspapers. But the Builders Exchange is really where we get a lot of response. All of the contractors look for that. And that's the one that they all go to.
Any other questions? The public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Close public comment? Any other discussion?
No.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Reading ahead. Just reading ahead. Darn, I got excited.
I have no glasses. I make a motion to advertise for bids for the construction of the Train Depot Park Improvement Project.
Now I second. We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Nice having. Okay. Moving on to reports and communications from city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Couple of items. The city has been trying to recruit an administrative analyst for a little while. We had quite a great response, and we did select an excellent, highly qualified person. She has accepted the offer, and we'll start on January 3rd. I'll introduce her to the council on January 17th. And her name is Casey Gavara, and she is a resident of Amador County. As you probably have heard about the drama that we've had with the building and the little leaky problems in the bathrooms, we've had to replace both toilets and the restrooms. We did finally put the carpet back down this weekend. We discovered what the problem was. We found all sorts of bizarre things inside the sewer system, which we removed. And we believe that the problem is fixed and that the vast majority minus the deductible will be covered under our property insurance for city hall. Caltrans was kind enough to extend the encroachment permit, closing State Route 104 for the Christmas parade that was originally scheduled on the 10th, and it was changed to the 17th, so we thank them for doing something quickly, which is not their big thing. They also, as you can see, they're on Main Street. I believe it's going to take two to three to four weeks to finish the actual on-street construction, barring any delays, and we hope that they will be done sometime in early January. There is a concern that they may shut off the water system, but the individual commercial, either operators or owners of those buildings have been notified. And they will be, and we will keep on top of it and make sure they're getting good information. City Hall will be closed on December 23rd. An observance of New Year's, or Christmas Eve, December 26th, and observance of Christmas and January 2nd, and observance of New Year's Day. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to council comments, committee reports, and future agenda items. Do you have anything dominant? Do you have anything, Dan?
Nope.
And I did not have anything, and I think our two other new people have not had any. Do you have anything for future agenda items?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. With that said, move on to, oh, so session, we have none this evening. Does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good job.
I can't see anything.